Good evening, everybody. Turn this microphone on. Welcome to the meeting tonight. Kind of a large agenda, a lot of good stuff going on this evening. To read this here for the beginning of every meeting. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to city council prior to the meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pasquale.
Here.
All right, this time we'll go ahead and stand for invocation by Pastor Greg Manser of Adventure Church of Yuba City. And then I'm gonna say a couple things before we do the pledge.
All right, shall we pray? Gracious Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We again just thank you for our freedoms as Americans and for the opportunity that we have to be a part of the political process. Thank you so much for these council members. Bless them, watch over them, give them wisdom and discernment for the matters that are before them tonight. We ask your blessing upon their families, upon staff members, and everyone who has a part in city government. We're so thankful for their service to us. And Father, we want to especially give you thanks for all of our first responders, all these police officers that are here gathered in the room. Father, for them, for our fire department, our other first responders, Lord, just bless them, bless their families, watch over their marriages and their children. Thank you for their service and their sacrifice to us. Keep them safe, Father, here in this place that we call home, in which we love, in which we live. Lord, for our schools, for all the folks who are involved in serving our community. We're so very grateful. So we praise you for your goodness to us. Thank you for allowing us this privilege tonight. Bless this meeting, we pray, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right, we have a special treat today for the pledge allegiance to the flag. It's gonna be quite interesting. We have four individuals from Cub Scout Troop and Boy Scout Troop 389. And Mr. Scott Bowden is the scout master, right there to your left there, Scott. Just take that and just give us a little rundown if you don't mind, a couple seconds.
I'd like to introduce our two den chiefs from Troop 389, Hunter Dre and Nathan Abbey. The den chief's responsibility is to bring the Cub Scouts and mentor the Cub Scouts into the troop. And so they're bringing their two sisters, Lacey, Dre, and Eden Abbey. Would you please?
All right, I'm on down.
I'm on down. And they're gonna help lead you in the pledge of allegiance. We also have the whole rest of the pack, troop and packs back here, too.
All right. Whenever you guys are ready, you know what to do, right?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you guys very much. Thank you guys very much. We're gonna be seeing them in a little bit. All those uniforms, I reverted back to old days. Yeah, all those old days. No, but I was in the CHP for 27. All right. That was really good. Mr. City Attorney, we have no, nothing to report. We have no closed session today. It's a rarity. And we have some agenda modifications. Item number six, which is a proclamation for the 10th Street Bridge. It will be heard immediately following item number four, and therefore item number five will be the last ceremonial presentation this evening. And I will need to recuse myself from item number 12 regarding the lighting and landscape maintenance district number five. So this item is going to be polled from consent and voted on separately. Can someone maybe stop them? We have a proclamation for them if they're, if they're all leaving. It's like a whole right hand, left hand thing going on here. Not right now, though. Not right now, though. We, you're in line to get a proclamation. We just wanted to... All right, there you go. You're good, stand by. All right. In fact, you're up now. Number one, recognition of Boy Scout Troop 389 and Cub Scout Pack 43 for flag post along Veterans Memorial Circle. If I could get Andrew Stockmail, who's the senior patrol leader, Scott Bowden scoutmaster, members of, all members of Boy Scout Troop 389 to come down, Devin Crosby, Cubmaster, and members of Cub Scout Pack 43. See, you guys are going the wrong direction. We need you up here. All right, so we have them up here today to recognize, who's representing Cub Scout Pack 43? Right here? There you go, you can have that. This is just a certificate of appreciation. And Boy Scout Troop 389, who's in charge? You are? I should've known that. All right. Why don't you stand in front of me, young man? All right, so what they do, you all noticed, of course, we didn't get the chance to do it this year because it was raining. But every year, these folks are responsible. They don't magically appear, but the flags you see posted in the sidewalk along Civic Center Boulevard, you're looking at the reason why, right here. So we just wanted to take the time to show our appreciation and recognition and give them experience to be up here and know what it feels like to look that direction instead of this direction. It's kind of different, isn't it? Yeah. But anyway, we want to thank you very much. We have these little certificates here for you. Hopefully, maybe we can make some photocopies. Everybody can take them home for you. And we'll go from there. So let's give them a hand after I ask if you all want to say, anybody want to say anything? Someone say something? You do? Okay, y'all, should've known.
Thank you for giving us the chance to serve you.
Someone's been listening, right? And I tell you, when we met in the parking lot when I was on the way in, this one, the first one approached me and he about broke my arm shaking my hand. So he's, he's learning, learning it the right way. We like to see that. All right. Anyway, let's give them a hand. Thank you very much. Good job. Thank you very much. And any and all family that are here that would like to join you is more than welcome to be a part of it. Up to you, up to you. Pressure's on. How you doing, buddy?
Good, and you?
Always good, always good. You're fine, Shady. No, you're fine, you're fine. This is the good stuff. This is a, in recognition of Mr. Drew Crawford right here to my left, in recognition of his retirement. Whereas Drew Crawford resigned from the Yuba City Fire Department on October 2nd, 2024, with over 26 years of service to the city of Yuba City and the residents of Sutter County. Drew began his career, began his career with the Yuba City Fire Department on October 24th, 1998. And during the subsequent years, he has held the rank of fire recruit, firefighter one, firefighter two, and fire apparatus operator. During his 26 years with the Yuba City Fire Department, Drew Crawford served and participated in every aspect of a modern fire department, including being a member of the fire department's advanced technical and swift water rescue team, the tactical EMS teams, a member of the department's safety committee, and provided training as a code three driving instructor. Drew Crawford contributed to the success and professionalism of the Yuba City Fire Department and the firefighting profession by serving on various department committees such as Fill the Boot, the Trauma Intervention Program, Yuba City Fire Department Rib Feed, Mel Good Breakfast, and Give a Key Pink October Fashion Shows. He developed and organized a department's successful breakfast with Santa Claus event and was a member of the Children's Public Education Code Three Clowns, acting as acts, teaching fire and life safety to youth throughout the Yuba-Sutter region. Whereas it is right and appropriate to recognize Drew Crawford on his retirement after many years of faithful service and for his many contributions to the Yuba City Fire Department. Now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council of the city of Yuba City, do hereby honor and command fire apparatus operator Drew Crawford for his service to the Yuba City Fire Department, the city of Yuba City, and to the people of Yuba City, and commend him for his 26-year career in the fire service, and wish him, of course, the much happiness and success in his well-deserved retirement. Let's give him a hand.
I'll keep it short, three things if I can, if I have the time. It's been an honor and privilege serving the city that I was born and raised in. Not many people have the opportunity, obviously, you get the bug in your throat when you get up here, but not many people in the fire service get the opportunity to stay in their hometown and do what I did. I've done CPR on people that I know. I've, I've helped many people that I know by first name from their chairs to their gurney, to send them in the hospital. And I've taught public safety at schools to my friends that I went to high school with or grandkids. So I've been, anything in between that, I've had the opportunity to do that. For that, I'm glad that I've been able to stay in Yuba City and do it here. I'd like to thank my family for putting up with me for the years that I've been there. It wasn't always easy, wasn't always good. Sometimes I was there many hours and late nights or a long time being gone from the home. And especially my wife, she's been in the medical service for the same length of time that I've been doing this, and she, she's been definitely a good crutch to lean on when there's been bad times, and I appreciate that. And another big thank you is to Chief Fire, Fire Chief Boom Garden. He, he sat down with me on a, in a coffee shop on Pluma Street, if you remember, and it's now Cupcake Magic, I guess. It's formerly known as a coffee shop there. I don't even remember the name, but, and he, he sat there and he said that I want to give you a position in the Yuba City Fire Department. And that's changed my life and my family's life, many that weren't even born at that time, and have provided me the opportunities that I have. So I appreciate you making that selection in the summer of 1998, so.
I'm doing my best.
Thank you.
Thank you. What?
And we have also Laura, David, and Isabella, if they're in the room, come on down, too. Retirement of Police Commander Eschman. Man, world's not gonna be the same. Yeah, it does. Yeah, it does sound formal for a guy who's so kicked back, but you know what? He gets the job done. We like, we like that kind of stuff. Have a good time, but everyone knows that the job needs to get done no matter what. So that's good. I have the honor of reading this to you all tonight. Whereas Sam Eschman began his career with the Yuba County Probation Department in June 1997. He went on to work at the Yuba County Sheriff's Office and the Marysville Police Department. Commander Eschman was hired as a police officer by the city of Yuba City on August 23rd, 2001. He successfully competed and was selected to the position of police detective, police sergeant, police lieutenant, and his last rank of police commander on May 2021. Commander Eschman has been recognized with numerous awards and commendations for his exemplary professional performance, including letters of appreciation from local schools, allied law enforcement agencies, commanding officers, and members of the public. Sam has served as an example of a leader, a team player, and an innovator as an employee of Yuba City. Sam has completed over 100, excuse me, 1,600 hours of training from the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, and attended the Senior Management Institute for Police presented by the public, excuse me, Police Executive Research Forum. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree from the California State University in Long Beach. Sam took an oath when he was hired to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, an oath he never broke. He kept faith with the public. He so honorably served for many years. Now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire council and citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Commander Sam Eschman on his honorable retirement. We wish Commander Eschman the very best in his future. And that is definitely true. Congratulations, sir.
Thanks. So I'll try not to take up too much of your time. These guys up here already do all that for me, so. So, yeah, it's been an honor to work here in this city and in the Yuba-Sutter area for the last 29 years. I've had the front row seat to the best show on earth, seen a lot of interesting things, a few crazy things. However, it's been a great ride. I just want to thank a few groups. First, the police department and all the members at the police department, some of the greatest people I've ever worked with. Solid group. Not too many people get to come to work, especially in public safety, where you work with a group of people that come to work every day knowing they're putting it on, all on the line. And they do it for them, for each other, and they do it for this community. And that's a pretty special group to work with. Also, all the city employees that I've got to work with over the years, huge, it's a small group, but they do a lot of big stuff. I wish everyone got to see behind the scenes like I do, what this entire staff in this city does for this community. I need that picture of Jeremy Garcia behind me. A SWAT photo. And then there's, you know, your family, you know, sacrifices. That's gonna hurt my reputation. You know, your family sacrifices a lot when you have this kind of job. I don't think my kids, until they're almost, well, Kayden's almost an adult, but I don't think they know what you did Christmas really falls on, because we celebrate it all the time. But just want to thank my family for the support over the years. Thanks.
We can do the photos however you want. I think it'd be awesome if we have your, your brothers in blue come down at least. We can get behind and, and take a send-off photo for you. You guys mind? Can that?
Do you want to do this first?
Either way, it doesn't matter. Is it okay if we do it my way? I got one more chance at this. They're already up here, so okay, fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David, with Congressman Doug LaMalfa's office, it's my honor to present you with the special congressional certificate, Commander Eschman. We greatly appreciate your 30 years of service in the Yuba-Sutter region. You have gone above and beyond in defending our, our citizens. You've showed, you know, great loyalty, and we greatly appreciate it. So on behalf of Congressman LaMalfa and the First District of California, we recognize your 30 years of service. We thank you, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you, sir, for holding your oath to the Constitution.
Thank you. Slide on down. Yeah, here you go, Laura. So on behalf of Senator Neal O, it is a privilege, it is an honor to be here tonight with Isabella Morgan from Assemblyman Gallagher's office to present you with this joint resolution of recognition. And it has all the things you've done, it has a beautiful number and a seal, it's part of the official record. But what it doesn't and can't do is talk about what you have done for the community, how you've kept people safe, how you've worked with everyone you've brought up, your amazing family. And we want to just be thankful for that and know that we wish you well in retirement and all that you do, so.
And then on behalf of Assemblyman Gallagher's office, we do want to say thank you as well for all of the years of commitment and service that you've served. And as you touched on earlier, and as Laura just said, we also want to say thank you to your family. It was a long 30 years, I bet, but thank you so much for supporting him and loving him, because that's also very important on that end as well. But thank you for everything that you've done, and we congratulate you on this retirement.
Laura has said it before, and her things, and Sam, you alluded to, alluded to it as well. Not only is it super important to have family there, knowing they're at home and in support of what you're doing 24/7, but, you know, this is a celebration of your career. Congratulations, you literally lived through it, you know what I mean? And it's, that's, that's not even a joke, as you know. But the, the things you've done, and Laura said this, both known and unknown. And there, and that unknown is probably even, that stack is probably even higher, so. Congratulations. Now I'd like to invite the PD down for the aforementioned photograph opportunity. Sit down. All right, we're gonna, we always stand behind you, get in the middle there, stand.
Congratulations. Enjoy retiring.
Congratulations, Sam.
Sam, Sam, I got one ask. Build that damn house on.
Next, we have a homelessness awareness month proclamation and presentation. Johnny Burke, come on down.
He has a short presentation here for us here.
You do?
Yeah.
At the podium presentation? Oh, okay. Would you like to do that first, or? Now we're here now. Let me get my eyes. All right, welcome, Johnny. It's been a while. Love your haircut. So this is about Homelessness Awareness Month, November 2024. Whereas homelessness is a challenge that has existed in Yuba City across the state and throughout the nation for many decades, Yuba City partners with numerous public and private agencies to develop solutions to homelessness that address the underlying situations for everyone who finds themselves homeless. Programs such as the Yuba City Police Homeless Liaison Officers, A Better Way, Hands of Hope, and the Coordinated Interest System have been achieving success as collaborative resources added within the last seven years. They have increased shelter beds and available housing. We recognize that some people living on the streets are from our own communities who have fallen into hard times and endured difficult situations that carried them into homelessness, and that it takes the strength of the whole community to help them regain hope and independence. The people of Yuba City recognize that homelessness continues to be a serious problem for hundreds of individuals and families in the region, and that we as a community cannot stand idly by as long as this struggle continues. So now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, hereby join in recognition of Homelessness Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to be aware that many people do not have housing and need support from residents as well as private and public service entities. So in recognition of that, I present you with this... All right, and Diane's gonna snap a quick photo real quick. All right, there you go.
Excellent. I do recognize that you have a very full schedule, so I'll try and go through things as quick as possible, but I wanted to give a brief overview. I love to come at least once a year and be able to visit the council and give some updates on, on things that are happening in our, on our region that concern folks experiencing homelessness. So it is National Homelessness Awareness Month, and so that is why I'm here, and that's when I typically make my, my visit. But anytime you guys want me to come, I'm willing to come, just so you know. But I wanted to give you a few numbers that we shared at our Summit on Ending Homelessness just a couple weeks ago, to let you know that frankly, homelessness in our area continues to grow. There is a lot of resources that have been put in, a lot of people that are being housed and sheltered and day services, but in our region, we have seen homelessness grow over the last several years, much akin to the rest of the state of California. The numbers on the screen right now may look extremely large to you, and they are. What these are is the number of, of folks that have accessed services through our coordinated entry system that are experiencing homelessness in any given calendar year. So we have calendar year 2021, 22, and 23 on there. This is for the Bye County region, not just Yuba City or even just Sutter County, this is for both. This is the number of folks that were homeless for at least one day over a calendar year. And you can see in 2021, that number was 2,067. It raised to 3224 the next year, and then 3,609 just last year. We will not have the ending results of this year until after all kinds of data crunching and stuff. We won't know until a little bit into 2025 what our numbers are, but we project they're gonna be similar, if not higher than last year. Underneath that, in the second column, is new to homelessness for the first time, and that number's been growing, too. Not quite at the same rate as overall homelessness, but it's 1407 in 2021, 1622 in 2022, and then rose to 1653 last year. So this is not the same group of people that we see. We have brand-new people experiencing homelessness for the first time, and that number continues to grow, which shows us that we need to continue to put an emphasis on prevention and trying to close that door for folks entering into homelessness. That last column there is the average length of time a person remains homeless. Although it did raise from 21 to 22, it did drop, and we are hoping to see that drop again. When that drops, that tells us that we are helping people more efficiently in faster way and getting them from homeless to housed quicker, which is a big goal. Like I said, I'm gonna throw a bunch of numbers at you very quickly, because I do know your time is limited tonight. This is the number of intakes at our coordinated entry sites. And so this intakes include folks that are brand-new to homelessness or folks that may have returned to the system that have been exited out and not touching any one of the partner agencies over the last six months. The top line there is for the Spive Avenue location of Hands of Hope here in Yuba City. In 2023, that number was 1,064. Year-to-date, it's 809, which puts that at a forecast of 971. So we may actually see a reduction in homelessness by a little amount on this side of the river. Unfortunately, Yuba County is seeing a larger surge on that side. So like I said, we'll know when the, when the year's done and after all our data crunching goes through, which takes a through, which takes a couple of months, but we do continue to see a raise. Now, we are now doing prevention intakes at the coordinated entry sites. And the idea behind that is to get people connected as quick as possible with services that will be able to help them to stay into housing and try and close that door for the number of people entering into homelessness. And so those numbers have been going up, and that's a good thing. We actually want to see those numbers go up because if those numbers go up and we can help people when they're currently in housing to stay in housing, then that means there'll be less folks that experience homelessness, which is much more expensive to move people from homelessness to house. So that number's gone up. We anticipate that'll go up even more next year, and that's a good thing. We've got over $600,000 that has been poured into the prevention category on both sides of the river over the next 24 months to try and keep people in housing who have already received 30- or 60-day notice or three-day payer quits. Like I said, a lot of information, a lot of quickly. Those numbers are the number of folks that are accessing coordinated entry, but we are still bound by HUD to do a point-in-time count every two years, and that's where we go out and do a survey and attempt to touch base with every single person in Yuba and Sutter Counties who's experiencing homelessness, whether it's in a shelter or unsheltered. If memory serves me, I believe we had Mayor Harris and Councilmember Boom Garden that helped us out in 2023 on that. And so I'd like to invite all five of you and city staff as well to join us in January as we go out and do our best to touch base with folks and do a survey. And the importance of this is a couple of things. We have a lot of data that comes through our coordinated entry system. Those are the big numbers that I just showed you. But Housing and Urban Development doesn't look at our daily coordinated entry data. They look at this point-in-time count because this is a historical number that has been done, the count's been done for many years. And so they are most interested in that, and we are starting to look like we're going to be able to get more and more federal funding, and so we want to have the best point-in-time count that we possibly can and try and... Here's my analogy. Let's do it like Pokemon. Pokemon, what's the slogan? It's catch 'em all, right? And so, and we don't want to catch people, we're not going to incarcerate them, but we want to catch up to them and do a short survey. And that survey is really important to be able to let people know that they count, that their voice can be heard, and that we care about the situations that led to their being homeless, and we also want to bring more resources in to move them out of homeless. So if you can join us, we're going to be doing some trainings, one in December and three in January. This email will be going out with this information in the next week to let everybody know to sign up for these, but we're trying to get as many folks to help out as possible. We are going to be in Yuba City two days, the last week of January. So January 27th, which is a Monday, we will be meeting at San Brandon Park, and we will be crisscrossing all across Yuba City on that day, doing surveys and catching up with people. And if you come, you'll get a pancake breakfast sponsored by the Kiwanis Club of Yuba City. And then if you come back at lunchtime, you'll have a bagged lunch that's provided by Hope Point Nazarene Church, so we're really excited about those partners. In addition, when you go out, you'll be able to hand a bag to everybody you communicate with, and that's going to be provided by Adventure Church of Yuba City as well. So a lot of Yuba City participation we're really excited about, and that'll be Monday. And then Tuesday, we're going to go out in Sutter County outside Yuba City, but then we're going to crisscross back across Yuba City in the afternoon. So we'll be two days that we will be in Yuba City on the last week of January trying to catch up to folks. So I hope you all can join us, and if you can't go, maybe you can designate somebody to go for you. I don't know how that works. If you guys have like apprentices or volunteers or whatever the case may be, but the more hands, the more chance that we can touch base with folks to have a more complete count, to be able to bring in more resources for our area. So with that, I hope I got in my time. I don't know there, but if anyone has any questions, I'd love to field them right now or we can touch base whenever. I think you all have my cellphone number too, so.
Through the mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Yes, I will be there and for the training. I was at a Children's and Families Commission meeting this afternoon, and they talked about how many homeless school-age kids there are, and the number was a 2022 number, but in Yuba City was 400, or Yuba City and Sutter County was 448, that they have to try to figure out how to get them to school and how to get, move them around. I mean, that was a big number for me, and I imagine it's bigger now because, you know, we're another year. I don't know if you have any more current information, but...
Yeah, it's our most difficult number to pin down for us because from a point-in-time count perspective, we don't get that number because Housing and Urban Development, their definition of homeless for the point-in-time counts is three specific categories. Number one is folks that are staying in a shelter. Number two is folks that are unsheltered in a place not meant for human habitation, so like out on the street, in a shed, whatever the case may be. And the third one is fleeing domestic violence. What's not included is what we call precariously housed, which is folks that are doubled up or you might have multiple families in one apartment or someone who's couch surfing. And so most of the kids that are in the school system that fall under what's called the McKinney-Vento statute, which allows them to service them, don't fall under HUD status. So we actually have several youth meetings, and actually both Sutter County Superintendent Schools, Yuba City Unified, Yuba County Office of Education, Marysville Joint Unified, Salvation Army, and the consortium are putting together a youth action board to try and get more voices from kids that have experience that would be under 25, so what we call an unaccompanied youth, to try and be able to figure out where these kids are and how we can get better resources. All of our federal funding that we would receive wouldn't be applicable for those, but the state funding is, it's much more open up. So the H-HAP funding that we receive almost yearly from the state of California can be used for those kids. And so we're working together to try and figure out what numbers, how many kids there is and what their needs are and how we can fund those programs. We're currently funding two homeless liaison individuals, one who works for Super County Superintendent Schools, and she's over at coordinated entry a couple of times a week or at least once weekly, and then one in Yuba County Office of Ed as well. And so we are hoping to expand and be able to connect more, to be able to... What's good about that group is they're not on the streets. Both counties have done a fantastic job over the last several years of using a variety of different funding sources, H-DAP, HSP, Bringing Families Home, all these programs you've probably heard about through the state of California that come through the counties. They've used those very well to get kids off the streets because it wasn't just but a few years ago, you'd see kids on the streets. So you'd go down Second Street when that was all camps, and there was motor homes and there was kids, you know, we'd see kids among those groups, and some of the cabins along the river, we'd see kids. You don't see kids on the streets anymore, which is a wonderful thing. But for those that are in the school systems that are double up and stuff, it's kind of tough to tell who's homeless and who's not, and they're very scared to tell us. They won't come into coordinated entry because if they're an unaccompanied youth under 18, they know the first call that has to be made is to CPS. Now that, because you got an unaccompanied kid under 18 years old who's not on their own or anything like that. And so it's a real challenge to be able to pin down who they are, where they are, and get them the resources they need.
The McKinney-Vento, this was my first introduction to it today. What a burden on the schools. I mean, it's good that we're taking care of the youth, but anyway, I appreciate the extra information. It just was alarming to me that there was that many students out there that, you know, bounce from place to place trying to find an education, and who knows how many aren't even getting in the education system. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, anybody else? We're good? All right, Johnny, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time, and you guys all have my cellphone number. I'm willing to be here every meeting if you need a new presentation or want to hear any other information. Love to share information as much as possible, so thank you.
We'll see you at one of the trainings, I'm sure, and then at the point-in-time at a minimum. Thank you all for everything you do.
Excellent, sounds good. So that's all five of you that signed up, is that right? Did I hear that right?
I can't speak for them.
I know, I know it's the beginning of tax season for Shaw, but I don't know about...
I know Jake will be there, will be there. We had a good chat the other day. All right, now we're putting six in front of five. Right now, we have a proclamation for the 10th Street Bridge, POW MIA Bridge. Mr. Bowen. This hat today is Veterans of Foreign Wars and Yuba City American Legion Post 705. Right? All those gentlemen, but you're the rep, correct? All right, well, come on down. Let's get you recognized here. All right, hold on. All right, Mr. Bowen. Whereas the 10th Street Bridge that separates two cities, the city of Yuba City and the city of Marysville, along with the two counties, the county of Sutter and the county of Yuba. As of September 2024, Sutter County is home to 4,967 veterans, and Yuba County is home to 5,750 veterans whose service and sacrifices exemplify dedication to our nation. The POW MIA flag bears the powerful message, "You are not forgotten," and is a lasting tribute to the 82,000 service members still listed as missing in action. In February 2024, the Yuba City Council officially proclaimed the 10th Street Bridge as the Medal of Honor Bridge, and now the city council seeks to further recognize the sacrifices of prisoners of war and those missing in action by proclaiming the bridge as the POW MIA Bridge. Now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby proclaim the 10th Street Bridge to be the POW MIA Bridge, in addition to its designation as the Medal of Honor Bridge, and hereby encourage the residents and businesses of Yuba City to show their appreciation for sacrifices that our military personnel make when defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage and to show them the honor and respect they have earned. And then some, of course. So there we go. It's our, at least we can do. Here we go here. Thank you, thank you. All right, so now we have the 2025-2029 CDBG Consolidated Plan Process, presented by Shannon, is it Sardo? All right, welcome, Shannon. And there's Ben.
You know, if I could just jump in for the quick introduction. So, so good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So tonight is a quick presentation about one of our favorite funding sources, CDBG. And so with CDBG, there's a five-year requirement to update our consolidated plan. And so Shannon's going to give a quick, she's our administrative analyst with the Development Services Department, who's been in the weeds and the specifics with the CDBG plan and all the hoops we jumped through. So she's going to give a quick run-through because it's an effort to basically focus this plan so then as we develop and select projects, we don't have to modify the plan as we pick projects over the next five years. So with that, happy to turn it over to Shannon with all the work she does for us.
Good evening. Like you said, it is going to be quick. We don't want to waste time. Also, the faster, better for me. I'm glad that it has dwindled. Anyway, so Community Development Rock Grant, you guys are familiar with that. I'm going to keep saying CDBG because it's a mouthful. Most of the point of this presentation is talking about our consolidated plan update for 2025 to 2029. Just a little bit of background, so the city is an entitlement jurisdiction, just means that we receive an annual allocation each year from HUD. The point of the CDBG program, provide decent housing, suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunities. And again, it focuses primarily on low and moderate income persons. This year is actually the 50th year of CDBG. Since the city became an entitlement jurisdiction, it's received over $16 million in funding over those years since the 80s. The prior activities here, just to refresh, because I know you guys do this every year, homeless services, housing rehab, public housing, public facilities improvements, a lot of park improvements, street, and then neighborhood revitalization. It's not all of them, but that's the majority. So the required planning documents, this main one, this five-year consolidated plan, it's going to identify the community's needs. It prioritizes and identifies them. We're going to need input from you guys, from the public, from service providers, all of that, and it helps us plan, again, like Ben was saying, for the next five years of CDBG funding. The second one here, the annual action plan, is probably what you guys are more familiar with because we do it every year. This will be done in conjunction with this consolidated plan this year. The previous consolidated plan, I won't read through all this, but we received about $3.1 million over those five years. This is the breakdown of the funding, the housing activities, public facilities, takes the majority of it because, quite frankly, it costs the most. Public services, there is, just a reminder, there is that cap on the funding each year. You can only spend 15% of your funding on public services, that's why that one is lower. Neighborhood park improvement, and then just the day-to-day admin. So the consolidated plan will have four parts, needs assessment, housing market analysis, strategic plan, and then that annual action plan. So the needs assessment and the housing market analysis is going to look at census data as well as taking input from service providers and local agencies that work on those specific things like housing, homeless services, all that good stuff. The strategic plan is going to help us prioritize the needs that we identify and then identify how we're going to fill those needs through public and private resources. So this is going to include not just through CDBG funding, we're going to take into account other grant funding that we may have, any general fund, any of that, just how it all works together strategically. The 2025 action plan, again, it is going to identify those specific projects and programs that we award funding to, and then how we're going to undertake those throughout that one program year. And then again, those come from the applications that people apply for the CDBG funding. This is a long one, but I won't touch on all of them. The main points I want to make with this one, we're notifying city council of this process for the year, and that the main one is that I want council and the public to know is that we really count on input from the public and from you guys and from service providers to identify the needs and prioritize them so we know really where we want to put the funding for the next five years. Our first public meeting is December 3rd. We're going to have it at the Senior Center. There will be a second, we call it a workshop, and the date is TBD, will be in January. I think you're probably going to make it virtual so it'll be easier for people to attend. Just a quick rundown, we're hoping to have funding applications open February, March, reading and ranking them around a couple of months after, and then we're going to draft the plan, bring it to council for approval, and then submit to HUD. The goal is to submit to HUD by May 15th. We don't always meet that goal, but that is still the goal. And then, yeah, I'm happy to take any questions you guys have.
All right, thank you. Shannon, where would someone go to find out more, someone who thinks they may or may not qualify to apply for CDBG money? Where's the best place for them to go to find that out?
I would say me. The documents that HUD provides can get a little complicated and lengthy. My information is on the city's website and the CDBG webpage. I can send out emails. If anyone here is interested, I can give you a card, but I would say me. I help kind of like work through all those. There's about like a 90-page document of eligibility, so.
Wow, okay. All right, thank you. Sure.
What's the marketing strategy to get this out to the public, lady?
Good question. So we advertise on our social media, the city's webpage, we send notices to the newspaper, we send emails to like previous subrecipients and service providers, those that have identified that they're interested. But yeah, I think the biggest thing we get engagement on is social media.
Through the mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Shannon, what time is that meeting on the 3rd?
Ooh, don't put me on the spot. I want to say 10:30 a.m. 10:30, yes, perfect. Thank you, Johnny.
Okay, thank you.
Any member of the public here to comment? All right, thank you, Shannon. Appreciate it. Presentation, but that's okay, we can ask anyone. We'll move on to number seven, appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on the other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allowed of five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public? Saying no, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Item number 12 has been removed into business items. So we're going to have consent items 8, 9, 10, 11, and 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. Okay? All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. So again, this will be public comments on items 8 through 11 and 13 through 19. Do we have any public comment on that? Any member of the council wish to remove another item besides number 12? Any member of the council wish to remove another item besides number 12? Okay, then we can entertain a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Move to approve.
I will second, I have a first and a second to approve consent counter items 8 through 11 and 13 through 19. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, passes unanimously. I will turn everything over to the Vice Mayor. We have the first business item, which is item number 12. I have to recruise because I live in the area in question.
There.
Through the Acting Mayor.
Sir.
It is an option, if the council desires, to skip the staff presentation, go immediately out for public comment, and bring it back to a vote if you want.
Indulge the council. We're comfortable with that, so we'll do agenda item 12, that's the lighting and landscape maintenance district number five, Zone K, budget allocation. Any public comment on this? Any public comment on this? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Let's get our fearless leader back out. Thank you, Mr. Chaffin.
Thank you for that. So now we're on item number 20, Parks and Recreation Commission, presented by Anne Gillan. Hi, Anne.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening. So I'm here to talk about the Parks and Rec Commission. So the Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Commission was established in 2002, and it was for an advisory to the, everyone in the city about pertaining to parks and recreation, anything that mattered, all the matters of parks and recreation. At that time, the committee, the commission was, they were recommending policies concerning parks and just our facilities and everything. They were also established as the city's tree advisory board. They have, we have five members and one alternate, and right now, we have two vacant seats, which one is, including an alternate. Over the last few years, there's been a decline in the interest and the participation and just in coming to the meetings, to our events, just to different things we have, the interest just doesn't seem to be there anymore. And then over that same time, we have recognized that the Community Services Department, the Parks Division, could be the tree advisory board. They're the ones out there every day looking at the trees, knowing what trees would work where and everything, so. And then all of our current Park and Rec Commissioners have been enjoyed, have been invited to join the Friends Foundation, the Parks and Rec Friends Foundation. Let's see, and then, so my recommendation is to introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Yuba City to repeal Chapter 1, Parks and Rec Commission, of Title IX of the Yuba City Municipal Code, and waive the first reading. The alternative would be to deny or modify the recommendation. Questions?
All right. Any member of the public care to comment on this item? All right, any comments or motion from council?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
First, I would say that it's unfortunate that we can't seem to get the community involved. I, I actually once was a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and I think there was probably a mission there, but I know that you have done outreach when we're developing parks, and I think that's a very suitable substitute for what's going on, because we will try to engage the public in that planning process. So I just wanted to, to say that, again, I don't, I think it's a good move to make. We have plenty of opportunity to engage with the public on those items that the Parks and Recreation Commission was supposed to be providing feedback on, so thanks.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
In my short time here, I've seen that the public does speak up very readily when there's something going on at their parks, so I, I'm confident that this will work as well.
Very good. Okay. Any action?
Through the mayor.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Yuba City to repeal Chapter 1, Park and Recreation Commission, of Title IX of the Yuba City Municipal Code, and waive the first reading.
Second.
I have a first and a second to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion passes, thank you very much, Anne.
Thank you.
All right. Speaking of the public, being engaged when we, when they're interested, we have the Plumas Tower Plaza Mini Park renaming, item number 21, presented by Josh Wolfe.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, and members of the public. That was a really long title, sorry about that. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the Plumas Tower Plaza Mini Park renaming. So I'll just give a quick background and run through this relatively quickly. So this is the proposed plaza area, a rendering of the design that's going to, that we're working on completing under the current water tower. So as a background with the project, in January of 2022, we applied for a grant to make some upgrades to the Plumas downtown area, including the Plaza Park, Water Tower, Center Street, and a few other options, or a few other items. In March of 2022, we were notified that we were awarded $2.2 million in grant funding from the Clean California Grant Program, and then through 2022 to today, we are working through procurement of contracts for the various phases of the project. So as I mentioned, there's about four separate projects involved in this grant that we received, one being the water tower painting, abatement, painting, and lighting, that you can see on the top left. Next phase, which is actually going to be coming into construction soon, is the Center Street lighting project, in which we're gonna be installing some ornamental poles and installing crisscrossing festoon lightings on Center Street from Plumas Street to Shasta Street. And then the bottom two are the Water Tower Park and the Gateway Arch. So in order to make sure that stakeholders could have, could provide ideas for the plaza, council established an ad hoc committee for renaming plaza, and also selecting a mural for the wall on Lee's Canton. So the ad hoc committee consisted of two council members as facilitators, and then from those that were participating, we have, the Downtown Business Association has a representative, the building owner, Lee's Canton, is a representative, the senior commission has a representative, and the youth commission has a representative. In terms of the, the plaza renaming, the process for that was in August of 2024. We released a call for names on social media, in which we had a poll that the public could comment on and provide names. Through that, we received about over 100 submissions via the poll, Facebook comments, and a hard copy letter submission. Then on October 11th, ad hoc committee met to review the name submissions and vote on the recommended name. Through the committee meeting, the committee reviewed the names that were submitted, and ultimately came down to about the top five name choices between the members that were attending that meeting, and from that, the members voted on the top five names. As you can see here, the top five names selected were Tower Plaza, Plumas Tower Plaza, Tower Park Plaza, Downtown Plaza, and Plumas Street Plaza. The one that received the most votes was Tower Plaza with four votes out of the five that were attending. In terms of facilitating this, it's minor cost for staff to support the committee. Alternative would be electing an alternative name for the plaza in accordance with city policy, but our recommendations are receiving a recommendation from the ad hoc committee for the renaming of the Plumas Tower Plaza Mini Park and conduct a public hearing. And then if council agrees with the recommendation of the ad hoc committee, adopting a resolution, renaming the Plumas Tower Plaza Mini Park to Tower Plaza. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we go to public hearing? All right, so we will go to the public hearing for the Plumas Tower Plaza Mini Park renaming is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on the issue, please provide your statement, be a public comment, and state your name and address for the record. We do have one written request from Natalie Severson, who is the Vice President of the Downtown Business Association, and she will have five minutes to speak. Welcome, Natalie.
Is this on? No, it's a name. Okay. Hi. Hey, everybody. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight, and everybody in here. So my name is Natalie Severson, I am business owner of Natalie Severson Photography on Plumas Street, Downtown Yuba City. This is on behalf of our DBA members that have, I went to visit some of them today, of my fellow neighbors downtown. We would just like to say, after further consideration, we'd like to put the vote on hold for finalizing the name of the new plaza on Plumas Street. While Tower Park has been suggested, we feel it lacks imagination, creativity, and fails to provide any meaningful direction or connection to the unique character of our community and the vision for this space. We believe there's value in exploring additional name options that better reflect the spirit and identity of the plaza. We hope to open the floor in the near future for further discussion and welcome any creative suggestions. So, that is all we have right now.
All right, thank you very much.
And then I just want to submit for DBA businesses, Electronic Playground, myself, Electronic Playground, again, Henshaw Insurance, Phoenix Ridge, Skip Muse Cafe, Twin Cities Flooring Covering, Cupcake, Maloney Optical, Seculent CBD, Novadalis Esperanza, ENJ's Music, Fernando's Cali Kitchen, Surabu's Brewing, Steel House Coffee, and Creative Interiors. And there was a few, few of my neighbors that were not business owners, that were not available at the time that I was down there to get their signature, but I know I've heard support of others. And then I know, I believe Sandy wants to comment too, so I'm done right now. So thank you, thank you, everyone.
All right. And now I just confirming those, the businesses that you just read, they are in support of reconsidering the name that was chosen.
Correct, yeah. And I can submit that too, if you would like to see that too. It was, I had them print their actual name, and then business owner name, their business name, and signature.
Thank you. Anybody else? Did you want to say anything, Sandy?
All right, hello. Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sandy Drouin, and I'm with the Happy Viking, and I also sat on with the ad hoc committee with Josh, and so I guess, and I didn't get a chance to sign that, so Natalie, make sure I sign that, but I was hoping for a reconsideration as well. I did sit on the ad hoc committee, I, there was five of us there, but I did feel that the DBA should have had a little bit more of, because we've got 80 merchants down there, that the vote should have been a little bit more heavier, so I went back to report that to the DBA, and that was where we kind of wanted to, this was kind of our plan to hopefully have a consideration. So thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else you'd like to weigh in? All right. If not, we can bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. I will close, close the hearing first, and bring you back.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think it lacks a little bit of zing. We're trying to promote Plumas Street, and just to say Tower Plaza, most people don't correlate Plumas Street with Tower Plaza, I mean, with the tower. And it's kind of, going through Bridge Street in that entryway, I'm sure the arch is gonna help a lot, but having a little bit more of an imaginative name than just Tower Plaza, I think would better draw more people, knowing where that location is, and so that would be my input on this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Josh, through the mayor, what's, what's gonna be the final verbiage on the arch? I think I've seen several iterations of that. What, or has that even been determined?
It's still being finalized, there's a top part, so it, I think it says, on the main marquee, I think it says Downtown Yuba City. I can't, I can get back to you on that, I can't remember, the verbiage has changed a few times, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's what I figured, because I didn't know. Okay.
Sorry, Yuba City Downtown, that's what it said.
That's what it says, propose now.
Yes, and then a historic banner on top, and that's about, and then there's some back and forth on having an established date for the town.
Okay, thanks.
Through the mayor. I guess going back to that room, Josh and Sandy, when we were all in there, not a problem delaying it, the DBA put forth, I think, three names, and, you know, not knowing what everything is going to be, one of the consensus in that room was everything saying Plumas or everything saying Downtown. We're gonna have Downtown on the arch, Downtown on the plaza, Downtown on the water tower, or Plumas here, Plumas there. It might be good to just delay this until we have a better understanding as far as how everything's gonna come together, and how they're gonna complement each other. But I, you know, I, the question I have is, do we want to go back and start from scratch? Because we had well over 100, you brought them, Josh, there's a lot of names in there, multiples came from the DBA. So do we kind of put this whole package back together? Is this what the council wants to do, and then try to make it all blend together, get the arch, get the name at the same time, and just kind of hit a pause button here? Or do we go back out to the public? Because as much as I love the DBA, this is the city park. It happens to be in the heart of the downtown, but it's the city's park, and it belongs to all the residents. So what is, I would, you know, where do you want to restart this process, would be my question?
You brought up the thought for me, David, that, do we even know what the mural's gonna be about? Because that, your correlation of all things probably would be the way to go with this, so that it does all tie together.
I know we have the mural designed pretty much set, we don't know, it's gonna be like a, what's the term, a fruit crate label?
One of them.
Say, Yuba City, and so with the, so the eight block letters, butts behind, and then we have to choose which one, what's gonna go in each one of the eight letters, right? And so one of the things that we talked about, and this might be a good reason, I think a legitimate reason, for combining both the arch and the name, perhaps even the mural finalized, is because we removed Downtown from the name of the park, because we didn't want to be redundant, because it's gonna be on the arch. That's one reason why, and we want, and less is more sometimes. We did agree immediately right on that we wanted a tower, we like, we all like tower in there, because it is a unique aspect of that particular park. So that's the reason behind that. But I do think it probably would be a good idea to combine, if not all three. Mark?
Is there any urgency to get this, is there something pending that we need to get done to name the park? I know, you know, the arch is probably something you want to get going on, and you've already done the water tower, but naming of the park probably isn't something that needs immediate action.
No, the, the only thing that there could be potential, the only potential thing that could change at a later date was we were, rather than having our standard name sign like we have at all the other parks, we were going to have the Parker Plaza's name embedded into a concrete seat wall. But that's something that can be changed even at construction time with precast letters they set in place.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm just reminded about something that our city attorney told us a couple years ago, when we were going through this process before, that the park naming seems to be a very contentious, he's nodding his head, contentious thing. And so if there's not, if we're not under the gun on this, I'm comfortable with putting it off and looking at it again.
Through the mayor, one more thing on the mural. It's not only the crate, but we've also talked about the significance of the water tower, which, Chief, you should know this, and it has to do with the fire department, and that is the old water tower where the fire department's set immediately under, and there's an historical photo that we were looking to have on that back wall as well. So we're really trying to encompass more than just the location, so I'm fine with tabling this, it's, but do we want to go back out where I started? We've got over 100 names, or just kind of set them on the shelf? We'll pick them back up later.
There's probably about four, five key words that we need to figure out with the order they go in, and make it out. Josh, before I forget, could you go back to the aerial photo of the rendering of the park? On the north side there, I think I saw security fence. On the north side there, I think I saw, security fence? Wait, back up another one or two, the drawing? That one? On the, is that, is that security fencing on the north end? Does that run down the length of the alley, or does it go against the building or something?
So what that is, is you have about a foot and a half tall curb along there, so in order to make sure if anyone wanders back there, there's no falls, I think what the plan is, is a three or four foot tall wrought iron fence.
Okay, so that's going to border the north edge of the park itself, okay, all right.
Through the Mayor.
Yes sir.
Point of procedure, if we do table this, like it sounds like we might do, would we have to take a new, reestablish a new ad hoc due to personnel changes?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Good question, but yes. And with that, we have the, so we're just going to table it, there's no real vote to take? Unless I'm incorrect, unless, right? We're just tabling it, okay. There we go. Is that consensus gentlemen? All right, we're good.
So through the Mayor, the record to reflect a consensus to table the item?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, all right. You guys want a minute? You going to vacate the room from the front row?
Going to Happy Viking?
Going to Happy Viking for the after-party? All right. While they're going, we're going to get ready to move on to item number 22, certifying needs, need for Calpers 180-day wait period, exception for Spencer Morrison to be appointed as Extra Help Finance Director. Welcome ma'am.
Good evening Mayor and Council. I'm here to request a resolution certifying the need for a limited-term extra help employment agreement for Spencer Morrison as a retired annuitant, and to waive the 180-day wait period for Calpers to allow Spencer to assist during the Electronic Resource Planning System Implementation, the ERP. Spencer is retiring on December 13th. A little background, through implementing the ERP system, we are going to streamline the operations in HR, payroll, finance, and procurement. There is a projected 400 hours of ERP meetings and training throughout the rest of this fiscal year. Spencer has extensive knowledge of Yuba City, and will help mitigate the gaps during the ERP implementation. Calpers has a 180-day wait period before rehiring retired annuitants. An exception to this is an employer resolution certifying a critical need to appoint the new tenant in less than 180 days following his retirement. The fiscal impact is a cost of $40,000 to backfill for the remainder of this fiscal year. There are sufficient funds in the ERP project to cover this cost. We are requesting a supplemental appropriation to account 1510-61-310 extra help of $40,000, and a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of funds from the ERP CIP project to cover this appointment. Alternatives, do not approve the Calpers 180-day wait period exception resolution and provide staff with direction on how to proceed. Our recommendation for this evening is to adopt the following resolutions. Certify the need for an exception to the Calpers 180-day wait period for Spencer Morrison. Approve the employment agreement and appoint Spencer Morrison as Extra Help Finance Director. Authorize the Finance Director to make a supplemental appropriation of $40,000 for extra help, and authorize the Finance Director to make a supplemental appropriation of $40,000 to transfer funds from the ERP project to cover this appointment. And that concludes the presentation.
All right, any member of the public here to comment on the item? Yeah? All right. He just wants to let it.
Through the Mayor.
He's got 40K on the line here.
Through the Mayor, I have a real quick question. I'm all in support of this, does Pers have to, could Pers say no?
I believe they, they do, they can.
Okay. Anyway, I move to approve, but I'm just concerned about.
A through D.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously, here we go, we get to enjoy his expertise for a little while longer. Now we're going to go on to number 23, Business License Ordinance Update, presented by the one and only Spencer Morrison.
I was sure that I was coming up here for different purposes, I thought this was my last project that I'm presenting tonight, apparently I get more work, so, thank you.
Oh boy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm presenting a Business License Ordinance Update, nonprofit exclusion proposal. And just a little background, in 1993, the Business License Tax was formed. It is not a regulatory license. Currently nonprofits are exempt, but are required to file for an application fee of $60. Fee covers processing, the cost of processing. Recent months, years, staff, council, and members of the nonprofit community are questioning the need. And, really one of the purposes of all business licenses, but especially a nonprofit business license, is just to raise awareness of who's conducting enterprise in your city. So it's easy to think about the really, the big, the obvious, the fireworks booths, and some of the more obvious enterprises that nonprofits conduct in the city. But through this process, it could raise a little bit more awareness. So, it is a current practice that's most common in California cities to require a, at least a business license application. It's not common to see a business license tax, so Yuba City's current practice is very commonly exercised throughout California. However, no application creates administrative convenience for the nonprofits. So that saves them a trip down to City Hall, and saves them the $60. Compliance occurs through other avenues, for instance, one of the things that when a nonprofit comes into the front counter to get a business license, the staff will ask also, well have you gotten your fictional name statement from the county? Have you applied for your seller's permit through the state of California? And, again, not regulatory, these are just compliance items that staff has opportunity to help with. Typically, my question was fireworks booths, where do the fireworks booths come in? And typically they reach out to the fire department first, according to the prevention officers, and then they send them, the prevention will send the fireworks booth operators to City Hall to get a business license. So it's not as though the business license triggers any kind of visit to the fire department or those needs. Our fireworks vendors go straight to the fire department, from what I understand. And, the fiscal impact is less than $4,000 a year. So it's a pretty small fiscal impact. So, because this is an ordinance update, this is going to be a two-part visit by the finance staff. So today, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, and then introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Yuba City to repeal Municipal Code subsection B2 of section 3-4.24, to exclude the license application requirement for nonprofit organizations, and waive the first reading. Any questions?
So we will go ahead and do that. Public hearing for the Business License Ordinance Update is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment, and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Hearing no further comment on the issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Through the Mayor. I move we introduce an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Yuba City to repeal Municipal Code Section B sub 2 of section 3-4.24, to exclude the license application requirement for nonprofit organizations, and waive the first reading.
Second.
I have a first and a second to approve staff's recommendation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, passes unanimously, thank you very much Spencer.
Pleasure.
We on to item number 24, Harder Estates North Reimbursement Agreement, presented by Ben Moody.
Okay, so good evening. This is a pretty straightforward item, but there was a lot of, a lot of details into it that staff has really helped with Ashley and Kevin on the city staff, really taking lead, and then Dr. Horton is also here to help answer any questions. So, what's before you tonight is in regards to Harder Estates North. So on the map, this is the construction that's currently going on, north of the water tank, south of Butte House Road, just west of Elmer Avenue. And so, with the reimbursement agreement, what happens is there's some work that's done that is fee, impact fee eligible, or specific plan fee eligible, where there's work that benefits more than just the development. And so, the contractor has done some work, or getting ready to do some work, and so we're entering into an agreement to basically say, hey, who's getting credits and who's paying what? And so, so analysis, the developer's constructing, serves Harder Estates North, normally funded by impact fees, not covered, and so you have, what's involved in this area is harder specific plan, development impact fees, and then also city impact fees for water sewer roads. This map is a little bit hard to follow, but what we have, the items at work that we're talking about for the reimbursement and fee credits, is some of the road improvement works, the storm drainage work along Butte House, as they widen that roadway, this trunk line sewer. So this was a trunk line sewer 18 inch deep, which is, which provides capacity to the north. And so if they were just building, typically a subdivision would come in, they would build a four inch, six inch sewer line, three to four foot deep. But where this one's at, it's an 18 foot, 18 inch trunk line that's set quite a bit deeper, so it could provide capacity to the north. And so with that, we're identifying these fee credits. You have a little bit of the harder improvements on the road, where they've, they're eligible for hard specific plan fee credits that the city is kind of the gatekeeper of. And so, and then there's a storm drain, some work that was partnered with the park improvements that we partnered on. And so, we dive into the weeds, we had a consultant also help us with these harder specific plan fees, and being a couple decades old, and making sure we're getting our numbers right, and the credits right, and how that comes across. And so, there's different funding sources that also come into it. And so, I don't know if I got a good one here, but basically the ultimate cost of improvements that developer put in is 1.85 million dollars, through the bids, through the construction estimates, what's been verified by the team, and then the fee credits that are eligible is approximately 1.3 million. And then, so then we have a reimbursement agreement, what's out, that's there, that's, that the developer basically has this reimbursement agreement that lasts over time, is that we still owe them $550,000. And so, the 1.3 million in fee credits comes off the house developments. When the houses get built, we won't charge them those fees. And so this agreement lays out those terms. And then the 550,000, it's set up to establish that that's this reimbursement agreement because it's in excess of the number of houses? But they can put in a request for payment of that 550,000, and then the city could use eligible fee credits from other associated impacts. So these are specifically related to sewer. So I anticipate that once the deal's set here with the agreement, there's an outstanding reimbursement of 550,000. I anticipate Dr. Horton then putting in a request for payment, and I could use, then the city has the option to consider repayment based on available fee credits such as from Harder South. So when they built the homes in Harder South, they each paid an individual impact fee for the sewer that goes into the piggy bank that we can then pay to. But so, per policy, and how we set it up and structure it, and get all the numbers right, what's before you tonight is this reimbursement agreement to pay the city's share and the Harder specific plans' share of the improvements that Dr. Horton built with their development. And so I'm trying to simplify that a little bit, I'm definitely happy to go into any of the weeds, and the developer with Dr. Horton's here, and staff's here that we could definitely help answer any questions. So tonight we're asking for a recommendation to adopt a resolution approving the execution of reimbursement agreement with Dr. Horton for public improvements associated with Harder Estates North subdivision. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead. Ben? That sewer line, so those developing north of Butte House are going to be able to tie in, that's basically what you're doing here, right? Setting up the stage for future development to the north. That's why you put in an 18 inch.
Correct.
Correct? Are those subdivisions and people going to have to divvy up to tie into that?
Yes, so when those individuals, so when Elmer develops up here to the north, they will pay a master plan sewer impact fee, so they'll be paying their $8,000 to $10,000 each. And that's, and that goes into that piggy bank that we're going to then, that we're using right now to pay them back.
Great, thank you.
Ben, on Harder South, do we anticipate any reimbursable services for them? Are they going to overdo the infrastructure as well, and end up getting more credits?
You know, so absolutely, it was discussed, when Diana worked through the development agreement update, and we looked at undergrounding and the financing, the way Harder South is laid out, there's not a lot of public improvements, because it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't set up where we had a main sewer line, it wasn't along an arterial. And so Harder North was definitely fee credit burdened, is one of the reasons why it was last to develop, because of the excess costs and how that gets funded back.
Thank you very much. Pretty smart to do that, actually, thinking ahead. And of course, credits would be very appropriate, so we appreciate that. Anybody else? Any member of the public? All right, let's see here. Now what we need is action. Any further discussion, if, of course, if you'd like, but other than that, we'll just go with action.
Through the Mayor. Move to approve item 24, Harder Estates North Reimbursement Agreement.
Second.
I have a first and a second to approve staff recommendation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, passes, yes, we thank you very much Ben. On to number 25, Traffic Calming Pilot Project on Sanborn Road and McCune, Josh is back.
Thank you, council. So tonight I'm going to be talking to you again about, this one is a traffic calming pilot project that we're looking to implement at Sanborn Road and McCune Avenue. So I'm just going to go through a little bit of definitions, talking about different roadway characteristics to kind of get us into the issues that we're dealing with on Sanborn Road. So basically, to sum it up, you have three types of roadways in town. You have arterials, which are main roadways like Bridge Street, Butte House Road. They're very wide, and you feel safe traveling at higher speeds on said roads. Collectors are kind of an intermediary road that are, that collect traffic from local roads and funnel them into the arterials. They're still pretty wide, and you feel safe going about 35 miles an hour or so. Some examples of that would be Royal Ranchero, Tharp Road. And then lastly, you have local roads, which make up the majority of all roads in town, primarily residential areas, school zones, things like that. They're typically in design very narrow, so that you feel like you're congested and you need to drive slower. So, to kind of illustrate that, here's three pictures. One is, the top left is Garden Highway, it's an arterial, very wide, it feels open, and you feel you could safely drive at a higher speed. Royal Ranchero is a collector, still pretty wide, but you have somewhat of a neighborhood feel, so you're driving a little bit slower as you're going down this road. And then, lastly, I have Local Road, Stabler Park Drive, if you look at that one, lots of trees there, the road's pretty narrow, it doesn't feel comfortable to drive any faster than 25 miles an hour. So in general, the, as you go down the pyramid of different road types, the slower you go. Now, Sanborn Road, though it is a collector, it doesn't really look like it fits into that same category as you have, it looks very long, straight, and wide open, so many people tend to go very fast down this road. And like I said, feels wide open, although on the right side of the road, you'll see there are a lot of driveway openings, lots of people walking up and down the road, riding their bikes, so there's a bit of conflict there, when you have high-speed drivers, and then people having the habits they do in residential, like walking, biking, kids playing in the road, things like that. road, things like that. So in August of this year, there was an accident on, at the intersection of Sanborn Road and McCune Avenue, in which a driver was driving at a very high speed, took the turn southbound on Sanborn Road to McCune Avenue, and ended up hitting a tree that is adjacent to a roadway. Thankfully, the tree was there to stop the car from entering the house, but it's not an ideal situation in any way you look at it. So in order to kind of see what the public thoughts were, and look into some engineering solutions, staff met with some residents in the area. Some of the takeaways from community outreach and some engineering thoughts were, the residents liked having a low-cost option, something that can be quickly installed, and if it's something that they didn't like, we could pull out quickly as well. So what we're looking at is, we want to slow the speeds down on Sanborn Road, since it's so adjacent to a residential area with lots of families and children in the area. We want to have, we want to restrict turning to make it safer for those going in and out, and we want something cost-effective. What we came up with was a roundabout pilot project. And so what we're looking at here is, this is a drawing we came up with, which basically what we're doing is, we'd be putting a roundabout at the intersection of McCune and Sanborn Road. In the middle, you'd have the sand barriers, or the sand drum barriers that you might see on construction projects with bright delineators in the middle section of the roundabout and here. So it'd be very well lit up, and it would have a safe crash barrier. On the outside of the roundabout, you'd have more delineators showing, basically keeping cars going through the path, not allowing them to exit the roundabout and just bypass it. So they'd have to be choked down to a lane of 11 foot, go around the roundabout, slowing down in the process, and then exit. Staff believes that this will help with the perception of having a long straightaway, it'll cause people to have to slow down, narrow down, make a turning movement, and then exit. And then also, we won't have the stop-start of a three-way stop, where people may or may not obey said three-way stop. Putting a physical barrier there will kind of more or less force people to obey traffic speed laws. In terms of implementing the project, we estimate for all the temporary items, the cost would be about $10,000. The account we're proposing for purchasing these items is a street maintenance account, 3130, for operations and maintenance. Alternatives are, take no action until another funding source is secured for the pilot project, or follow procedures to implement a three-way stop. We don't believe that this would effectively address the traffic calming issues in the area, given high speeds and reckless driving, and this may continue to cause more enforcement needs, knowing that area is enforced by Sutter County, there's not a lot of coverage there. So what our recommendation is, is adopting a resolution approving the design of the temporary roundabout at Sanborn Road and McCune Avenue in Uba City, as shown in the exhibit, approving the installation of the temporary roundabout on Sanborn Road and McCune Avenue in Uba City. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question, go ahead.
Is there any thought of maybe using speed bumps?
Some residents did propose speed bumps. The only issue, one thing I think about the first time I hear speed bump is, when you have people that are driving 50 or 60 miles an hour, and they hit that speed bump, their car may get airborne and careen into another house. Speed bumps may be effective, but we think this option would be pretty cheap and quick to implement. And like I said, everything that's going to be installed in here will be bolted down. So if, after a couple months, residents in the area give us feedback, this isn't working, people are still speeding, and we just don't like this, we'll pull it out, and our staff at the courtyard will have these devices for another location.
Okay, my second question would be then, you've got a schedule of how you're going to monitor this, see if it's effective or not?
Yes. So when we met with the residents in August, we, the first thing we did was, we placed a, our traffic radar device in the area to see what the existing speeds were in the area, to help provide us data. If approved, we're going to install this, or the radar again, and monitor, see if speeds are reducing, and also engage the public in the area and see what, what their feedback is, what they're noticing as well.
The mayor? Yep. So if this works, it becomes permanent?
That is a possibility. If, if the residents are happy with it, and it is an effective measure, what we would potentially propose would be creating a permanent project. For that, we will be pursue, we would go after grant funds that cover safety projects. So yes, it could be a permanent solution.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Josh, don't take this personal, but roundabouts and me don't mix. Have you checked with the fire department?
I have not consulted with them, though I did get into our AutoCAD program, pulled up the, one of the recent Pierce engines that we bought, and based on the size, I did maneuver it through the roundabout to see if there would be any issues in terms of turning. It fit through there with no issues. It was tight, but it did fit. And the delineators I spoke about here, they're exaggerated on this drawing, they're about two inches or so wide, they're flexible, so if fire needed to get through, they could run them over, the things will pop right back up.
So the issue for me has always been with traffic calming is response time. And you balance that against, you know, the fact that you're also trying to save from an accident. But man, before you go ahead with this, I would sure think that it would be worthwhile to at least engage and get their thoughts, because I know that that will potentially affect, I don't know how, how much your modeling might be able to, to put that through, but just at a matter of professional courtesy, I'd make a suggestion, that's all. The other question I have, and then a comment, is, this is, Sanborn is shared with the county, correct?
Yes.
So are they going to participate in portion of paying for this?
So what's interesting is, the residents on the west side of the road are in the county, but the right-of-way line is actually, it's not in the road right-of-way area. So the city-county line, I apologize, I don't have it in here, but from memory, the right-of-way is right about where my mouse cursor is here. So they mentioned, when they met with us originally, they would help, but they hadn't, they didn't commit to any sort of monetary, monetary contribution.
Perhaps if this turns into a permanent solution, we could probably re-engage with them?
I believe that would be a great option.
The, the last one's more of a comment for the mayor. When I stepped in for you, Mayor, at Secog, Mr. Corliss indicated, there was a presentation by Marysville in regards to a roundabout, temporary roundabout they placed in the north portion of their city, and he urged cities with similar projects to reach out to them. I think staff has done that, but maybe a personal called Mr. Corliss, because he urged, called it a quick, a quick call or something. I don't remember the actual thing, but I know your relationship with him is tight, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I spoke with Branscombe about it as well, Mayor Branscombe, so.
Thank you.
I happen to, even though I definitely understand the, the major pushback would be from the fire department, same thing, they have same, similar argument against speed bumps in some cases too, which I completely understand. Having said that, I do remain an overall fan of roundabouts in that, as far as traffic calming, and you don't have to stop, you can legally just go if there's no one coming. And so anyway, for that, that reason, I'd be willing to do a, a support, a temporary roundabout here, but I do highly recommend, before we do anything, that we do consult with our, with our fire staff. And I don't know, the, the size or proportions, is it similar to the one over there on the, by, what is that, the New Dutch Bros, their, that roundabout? Is it similar to that one?
Similar, the lane widths are a little bit, so there, their lane widths are 18 foot, this one is 14 foot wide. But we can make some, we can modify them after consulting with fire to make sure that any of their engines can get through there sufficiently.
I would even recommend considering also seeing if they can even make a U-turn in, in that same thing, not just maneuver through it. Because my friend is correct, you know, in, in that line of work, every millisecond counts. However, safety is also important too, so you got to weigh it up there. But I think that would be a good next step in the process, would be to consult with our fire friend, or fire folks, so. Nothing from Vice Mayor. Let's write that down somewhere. All right. Any comment from the public on that? Okay, Tony, come on down.
Hi. Tony Curlin, 636 Anna Drive. I live just a couple of blocks away from where this proposal is, and I know that the traffic on Sanborn can be anywhere from 50 to 70 miles an hour. And we on Anna Drive, which is parallel, we suffer from the same thing. Stop signs are optional in our area, there's no traffic enforcement in our area. So as soon as these cars make it through that roundabout on Sanborn at McCune, you got it wide open all the way down to Cherry. And that's where you're going to find the 50, 60, 70 mile an hours, just as you will on Anna. When they put the radar machine on Anna, it slowed things down, as soon as they took it out, back to normal. So you might slow things down at McCune, but down towards Cherry, this is not going to have any effect, unless you can get Sutter County sheriffs to do traffic enforcement. Otherwise, I think it's just wishful thinking. Thanks.
It's part of the reason why we're doing temporary, is see if there's any change and see if there's any, what the crash picture looks like and things like that. So definitely, especially the price tag, I mean, let's, let's see what happens, and if it does work out, we might have a, something to answer for future development as well, provided the very important fire department's issue. You have something to say? Yeah, go ahead.
Now that Tony spoke, I've got a question. If we do the one study here, can that launch us into getting grants for multiples down there? Because you could do multiples along that and really slow it down, or is it just going to be a grant for that one intersection? We got to go through the minutia all over again.
Sorry, I thought Ben was going to come up. So you want me to go first?
I'm sorry to cut in on that, but it's kind of a bigger problem, a holistic problem that's kind of, that's tied into our traffic model and development of that Lincoln East specific plan area for those subdivisions on the west as you come up around. And so absolutely Harding is too fast. I don't know how many drunk drivers have hit that, Harding to Cherry. We, we start, bigger stop signs, rumble strips, lane width lines, you know, crash barriers, bollards, rocks, you know, we, we put it in, and it's, you know, and if I, if I could go back 30 years, we would have done some sort of different layout, so you don't come to a T-intersection. But I think we're, with the traffic model, it's really looking at some options, there's some, there's some discussion about maybe putting a cul-de-sac in here instead of, you know, and so that it forces that vehicle traffic not to bypass, you know, because what they're doing is, they're, they're going on, they're, they're bypassing Walton, and they're coming around that backside. And so I think a more holistic approach, we need to look at when we start developing, when Harter, the west side of Harding starts to develop, how we start handling some of that. And I think everything's on the table, from cul-de-sacs, or, or maybe optioning out where there's a hard break to, to get people to move into a different direction, so they're not using this as a cutoff road. So definitely, I would say, a lot of things are in the options. I like to, with traffic calming, I, I agree, you know, I've been ducking speed bumps for the last 18 years I've been here with the city, because they're, where do you start? Where do you stop with those? And, and they affect other things, and they're expensive, and they, they have other problems. And so I don't think that's the solution, but usually we start with signage, striping, you start looking into these chokers or different things. And these speed, these, I agree, the, the nice thing with the roundabout is that it doesn't require the enforcement. You put the stop signs there, only the, only the citizen that's driving the speed limit is the one that comes to the stop. Everybody else rolls through it, and it causes this complication where now do you create a dangerous situation? And so definitely, we're going to consult with fire, make sure it lines up with everything, but we could start with the speed there, and then we could definitely, as they work to replace that crash barrier at Harding, we start looking at something that can, and then as Cherry comes out onto Walton with the Walton improvements, fixing some of that turning movements, it is definitely on the city's radar.
Through the mayor, I'd like to make a couple statements, please. So as you consider this tonight, one of the things I'd like you to expand, because the key here is that we're asking you to approve the design. And even though this is a pilot project, one of the things that I want to point out is pedestrian traffic going north-south on McCune, and how these channelizers are going to impact ADA access. And so I'm requesting that council not only consider this design, but any modifications that we need to make to the curb returns and the ADA ramps to accommodate pedestrian traffic, which may mean that we have to build temporary ramps further east on McCune to accommodate getting the pedestrians outside of those delineators, and also out of the travel path of the roundabout. So as you're considering the approval and adopting the resolution, I'd like you to also add, in addition, any modifications that need, need to be made to address pedestrian traffic. My second point is, this is going to fall under the concept, and I hate to say this, of no good deed goes unpunished. And the reason I say that is, there's a lot of streets within this community that could benefit from this type of traffic calming measure and other traffic calming measures. And as this goes forward, you know, you're going to have residents come forward that say, what about me? You're doing this pilot project here, Second Street comes to mind for me, we've had a lot of requests for traffic calming on Second Street. And as Josh noted, there's $20,000 in this account, which this could potentially take half of that. And so I think it's great ideas in terms of how we analyze additional streets. As Ben mentioned, this is part of a much larger project and much larger issue throughout the city. So as we approach this, you know, this is the pilot, but there needs to be a more holistic approach as to evaluating policies and practices as to, how are we going to prioritize and allocate and determine which locations get priority over others? Because there are a lot of locations in the city that would benefit from traffic calming. And as you all know, there's limited resources to be able to do so. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Diana.
Back through the mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Want to reframe my question. Mr. Moody, I appreciate what you said, but really what I was trying to get at is, the data off of this, are we going to be able to use this to get whatever other funding, whether it's a cul-de-sac, whether it's a stop sign, whether it's a roundabout, can we use this data we're going to get as a launchpad for grants? Is what I was trying to get at.
So. You know, it definitely helps, right? So any good data, traffic calming, as we go out for these ATP grants, that shows that it's better for traffic calming, you know, complete streets, absolutely. I would say, with this particular location, with development happening to the west, there's an opportunity to put in a mitigation fee also, as, as far as, because on that traffic model, they're in the environmental for the old Lincoln East, it was, hey, what's the traffic mitigation? And so there's an opportunity to put maybe a small fee on those houses as they develop out in Lincoln Road and out that way, to say, hey, pay your portion towards this permanent improvement, what it might be. And so that's another funding source option. But yes, the data's always good, a complete street, those are the buzzwords, traffic calming, pedestrians, those definitely help on the grants that are available nowadays.
Okay, so yeah, it is, thank you for reeling us back in here a little bit, Diana, because we are here to merely approve the design of the roundabout. I don't see anything on there regarding, because you bring up a good point, ADA improvements, there's nothing in that design that I see that addresses those. Is that merely, just you recommend that we include that as a footnote, to, to work that into the plan as well?
Yeah, I'd like you to specifically include that in your approval, and then that way, if something comes up in the future where, you know, something occurs with this design, we have design immunity, and it was acknowledged that council recognized that we would need to do some ADA improvements to accommodate the pedestrian traffic. Because the way it's, it's currently aligned, and, and Josh did a great job on the design, it's just with these roundabouts, many roundabouts, one of the things that you need to look at is pedestrian. pedestrian access. And by installing the delineators, and because the roundabout is hugged up more to the east side because of the available width of the pavement, it is encroaching on pedestrian access. So we need to make some, either we need to close those ramps and force pedestrians further to the east down to the next north-south street to cross, or we need to put in temporary ADA ramps, which really won't become temporary because they're going to require curb cuts and things like that. And so we just want to make sure that that's included in that design approval.
Looks like probably even the, it's unmarked, it looks like, but the crosswalk as well. Same thing on both sides. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One way to do that, to include that, would be for Section One of the resolution, to read the proposed design of the temporary roundabout at Sanborn Road and McKeon Avenue, and any additions necessary to address the same, or, excuse me, McKeon Avenue attached to Exhibit A, and any additions necessary to address pedestrian access is hereby approved by the City Council of Yuba City. That would be the magic language if you're inclined to do so.
And can we just say what you said?
Hold on.
We have another question here. I rise and writing that down. All right.
I would love to approve that, but I do believe we need to have some sort of verbiage in there that is subject to, and I don't like the word approval, but something with the fire department, because I want to make sure that ladder truck can get through there.
I agree. I agree. So we got that, right? All right. So, and Shannon, you have my back on this. Have I asked for public comment on this yet?
Yes, you have.
All right. So we'll go back, and that's just further comment, gentlemen? All right. So it's going to be, adopt the action, recommended action, with the addition of what he said, and consultation with the fire department. So that would be the motion that I'm looking for. Please.
Moved.
So moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no one's opposed? Thank you very much, once again, Josh.
Thank you.
And thank you for that additional information, Diana. Appreciate that. Number 26, 2025 City Council Meeting Calendar. It might be available.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to discuss with you the 2025 City Council Meeting Calendar. As you know, City Council meetings are held on the first and third Tuesdays at 6:00 p.m. This is no different in 2025. There are a couple of recommended changes that I'd like to suggest. First and foremost, we're recommending that we cancel the meeting on January 7. This meeting falls obviously right after the holiday period and the holiday closure, and all of the prep time that is required for a council meeting is going to occur when City Hall and staff are closed and gone. So we're recommending that that meeting be canceled on January 7. And we're also recommending the addition of a goal-setting workshop on January 29, and a budget study workshop on May 27. In previous years, you may have remembered that we canceled the first meeting in August in recognition of National Night Out. That is not the case in 2025. My understanding is that National Night Out will be recognized and celebrated on a different day. And so we will, in fact, have both the first and second meeting in August, as well as the first and second meeting in July, because the Fourth of July falls at the end of the week, and there is no conflict there. So only one meeting to cancel this year. And one other consideration to keep in mind is that cap to cap is happening during that first week of May. So depending on who will be attending that conference, we may have a quorum issue. And so just keep in mind that May 6 may be another consideration for cancellation if we don't feel like we'll have a quorum here in chambers. So my recommendation is to approve the recommendations and provide direction regarding May 6 for the 2025 Council Meeting Calendar. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any public comment on the item? Seeing none? Up to you guys.
Through the mayor. Thanks, Sierra, for bringing all this forward. After looking at the changes to next year's and talking with our city manager, I think we just go with the recommended changes on the top for now, even though we are aware that we may cancel the May 6 meeting, but let's leave that as a placeholder. Just in case we have something come up, we can always cancel it at a future date if there's no business that comes forward. And we've got a hell of a lot of work to get done this next year, guys.
All right. Anyone else?
You got a motion?
Nope.
No, that was a comment. I can make it a motion. Oh, through the mayor, I move that we adopt the council calendar for 2025 with the recommended changes as noted above.
And for my clarification through the mayor, does that mean that May 6 is still on for now?
May 6 is still on.
Okay, thank you so much.
As a placeholder, just in case we need it. All right, first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much, as usual, Sierra. I heard number 27, I believe, is future agenda items. Do you have anything? All right. Starting with reports and communications, beginning with our city manager.
So we do not have a council meeting on December 3. We will have a special council meeting on December 10, in which we will recognize our outgoing mayor, do certification of election, and then also select the new, the new mayor and vice mayor. The holiday truck parade is December 5 through 8 this year. City Hall is closed next week for Thanksgiving, and I just want to, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I just want to thank everybody or say happy Thanksgiving. It seems so strange that we're at this time of year, but I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, a couple comments on the status of Measure D, just because it was very important to this city council, I believe. This information that I'm going to share real quickly, or rather quickly, comes from information that was produced by Michael Coleman, and it was based on election results as of November 6. And the reason I'm sharing it is because I think it kind of proves interesting. Number one is that there were 95 sales tax measures on the ballot up and down the state. Eighty-six percent of those passed or were passing on November 6. There was a couple that were too close to call. Ours was initially too close to call, but since more numbers have come in. The number of, the percentage of general fund sales tax measures passed at a rate of 86%, which was consistent with what I think we thought would happen with a general sales tax measure. The special sales tax measures of those out there, they passed at only a rate of 54%. So, you know, almost a 50% either way type of a deal. So I think that, that the, there's a lot to be learned, a lot that we will continue to learn, a lot that we will pick up when we start doing some analysis and, you know, some decisions for the council to make in regards to going forward. But for those who supported Measure D, I would like to say thank you. It was, I hope that's appropriate, Shannon, and if it isn't, oh, well.
Let me do it. Let me do it.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, it, I think that, you know, we will regroup. I don't look at it as a failure. It's disappointing, but information gathered will be used for decisions going forward. Moving from that, I attended the Sutter Beach Flood Control Agency meeting along with Councilmember Kirchner. We did get a financial report. You'd be happy to know that they're doing, they continue to do well as far as revenues and expenditures. There's a project that runs along the Feather River, and I don't know if you would rather talk about it, where they're going to do some salmon habitat repair. It's kind of a, it's a Mike Johnston Feather River Parkway project that they got a grant for. I think we talked about two years before it really gets going. There's like a year of design and a year of construction, but it's some improvements. Again, I think the overall goal is to try to take care of salmon habitat down there, but through some of the work that we've been able to accomplish with the CCC and with our local police and sheriff, cleaning up that area and returning the river to those who want to use it, including citizens. And so it's just kind of an exciting thing. The other meeting I went to was today, was Children's and Families Commission. This one caught me off guard, and I think the Vice Mayor may have some information on this as well, but we have the potential for 500 school-aged Afghan refugees coming into the city of Yuba City. And this is going to pose quite a problem, not a problem, but a challenge to the local school district, but it also proves a challenge to the city to try to house these folks. And it's alarming inasmuch as the reason I think that the influx seems to be coming, at least the best information I got, was the other community around us, the big one, is basically saying we can't serve them. And so the question comes up, well, what makes anybody think that we can anymore? And I'm not suggesting that we don't open our doors and take care of our fellow human beings, but this could, this could be quite a deal. And again, I think you got a briefing from the school districts. This was a children's and families thing because these children come without really any school, and they haven't got the immunization, so they can't enter the school. And it just, and there's this, the language is Farsi, and so the schools are trying to scramble to get Farsi interpreters. And anyway, that was, that was the most notable thing coming out of that meeting, was this challenge that our community, Yuba City Unified and our community and the county of Sutter are facing, and I imagine Yuba County as well. But with that, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope it's a safe one. And I'll pass it to the mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for those, those words, Mark. I think, I know we were all kind of disappointed on the, the results on the, just to add to that, it's notable that across the river, they were able to get there, so with the finish line, by a margin of 75% to 25%. And speaking with our district attorney yesterday, Butte County passed hers by quite a margin as well. So that's, it's, it's frustrating, but we move, we move forward. I attended the Veterans Day Breakfast that was provided to us by firefighters at Station 4. Thank you, Chief, for that. Attended the Senior Resource Fair that was well, well-attended. Great job, guys. Every year, the attendance of that just goes, you're going to need a bigger place here pretty soon, which is a good, that's actually a good problem. I had the privilege of attending the Veterans Day Parade, and thank you for, to PD for loaning us the, the Yuba City Honker car, which I, that was a dream of mine to drive that down D Street in Marysville. So that was, that was nice. The Councilman Boomgard mentioned the discussion at Sabufka, and that side channel project is really exciting. Just to note to that, the grant structure does not include maintaining it, and that was brought up. And that's, to me, that's a big red flag because it's neat to push dirt around, but if you don't maintain it, then you've got a problem, especially if you have a population down there. And so it was my understanding that they at least had a verbal agreement that Salav was going, and that's going to be, that's going to be, that's going to be a big project for them, but kudos for them for volunteering to do that. Gilser was canceled. Regional Water Authority, they did the 25 election of officers and executive committee members. We did attend the, I attended the groundbreaking of the new Sutter County Career Training and Conference Center, which is going to be amazing. The conference center is going to hold 500 people in itself, which is, it's also going to provide the needed training for folks that are in need of that. I attended the ribbon cutting at a new business in town called Nearly Farrell. It's a salon studio over here at 1600 Star Drive, so congratulations to them. Mosquito, there really wasn't much activity because it's getting cold. I don't know if you noticed that. But we are just talking about, having a conversation between having a defined contribution plan versus a deferred, excuse me, a defined benefit plan. Get that right. And lastly, I would like to give a huge shout out to our community's first responders. It was all hands on deck this morning when I looked down my driveway, down there at Cherry and South Walton. And I'm hoping to move, moving forward, we take a look at that, that area, and hopefully improve it, because my phone started ringing. Shout out to our first response, to Chief as well. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Mr. Esquali.
Thank you, Mayor. The only order of business I had was the Yuba-Sutter Air Quality Control. I'm on that finance committee, and they're rolling out a proposal to do a remodel. They're going to adjust the building. It was, it was originally a dental office, and it really hasn't worked out. There's a lot of dead space in it. So we had a special meeting for that. And other than that, I was at the Veterans Day Parade, got, Mr. Kirchner was driving me, and I unfortunately made the mistake of giving him the microphone.
Siren, gave him the siren.
And I knew how to use it, and he started talking to people as we were driving. I thought that was quite comical, but it was fun.
While he was driving?
While he was driving. He was talking to people while I was driving.
I heard him.
And with that, I conclude my report.
All right. Vice Mayor.
Before I start, I'm just wondering why you guys were perplexed. He was talking and driving. That's Wade. Anyway, start with some of the highlights. The Sutter County Office of Education to Superintendent Russer and his entire team. Wow. And thank you for bringing that training center to our city because it's, it's going to be an added help, and it gets back to some of the things that you were alluding to with adult education and stuff earlier, because I'm going to chain those together here in a minute, talking about the kids and the challenges they face. It's going to be a great asset to our community with adult education, and not everybody's, you know, set to go to a four-year university. They need that career technical stuff, so it's, it's a much-needed asset. We met with the DBA and the property owners this morning, still talking about the challenges down with our downtown business association, dues assessments and concerns that they continue to have there. And that's just going to continue to be an ongoing process that we work with them because we want that to be a very vibrant and thriving downtown of our city to where people go down and enjoy an evening. The school district meeting, yeah, it's, I'm not sure if it's 500 kids or 500 total, because the rough immediate text we got the day of the meeting was 500 Afghani refugees coming to Yuba City, and really unknown as far as the impact with the kids. You know, on the one hand, you know, our schools do have, they're not at max capacity, so there's room there, but it's beyond just having physical room. You know, some of the things they have to look at is when people come in from other countries or out of the area, if they do not speak English, then they have a really fast timeline, I believe it was 60 days, that they have to evaluate them, test them, and then start providing services in their native language. I don't speak Afghani. I don't know too many teachers around here that speak it either. So you can see, they're perplexed at this. The big shot that was bothering us all was the simple fact that this was just kind of thrust upon us because Sacramento basically says we're at, we can't serve them anymore, and we're going to ship them north. So on that, just know in the background, there's a lot of moving parts really trying to figure this out. And it's not just our school system that's going to be impacted. It's going to be Health and Human Services from the county. Sarah and her team is going to have to be dealing with this. We're going to be dealing with it not only from possible law enforcement issues because they don't understand our laws, and we've already heard different things that go on because they're not used to being in America. because they're not used to being in America, to code enforcement potentially, because we've also been told that how they bring them here is they will rent a four-bedroom house. Guess how many families are going into the four-bedroom house? Four. One for each bedroom. So that's, that's how that system kind of works. So, you know, we want to find out everything we can, find out how it's going to impact our city, impact our schools, because as I said in that meeting and told our superintendent of education, we do not want to end up being a city like we've seen others, to where our, our students that have been here are being impacted and transferred and moved around and things happening to our education system because something's being forced upon us. If we're going to have to deal with this, we need to be working collaboratively with wherever they're coming from as one, one group, because it's going to affect us all, from the schools to Health and Human Services, the county, the city. We have to be all together in figuring this out. So hopefully we'll have more information on that shortly. I want to end on Measure D versus starting with it tonight. Disappointed, because we've spent six years figuring out what the city needed. But as Mark said, it's not the end of all. We kind of looked at this and knew that this was a possible outcome to where we're at. You know, I want to thank our city team and our executive team. You guys put in countless hours and went above and beyond explaining to the residents of our city the need and the purpose of what we were trying to do and where we were going. So thank you, you guys. Went way, way above and beyond any expectations. And then thank you to the citizens that, that got behind us and got with us and said, let's do this and take ownership of our city. But this is not the end. And, you know, what you have from us, and I'm just going to take liberty here, because I think this is probably all of us, Mayor pinned a little thing earlier, we're in this together. We faced challenges before, and we're going to face challenges together again. And we're going to do what we need to do to give our residents the best quality of life that we can, with the resources we can, or have. So just know that we're going to work together on this, and this is not the end. And boys, hang on, because we've got some work to do. So, Mr. Mayor? And happy Thanksgiving.
Definitely a lot of work ahead of you guys. But, you know, I don't want to make light of it, because it was, it was in fact disappointing. And I want to reiterate what you just said, Vice Mayor, in that city staff, above and beyond exceeded expectations, literally nothing, I don't, we don't know of anything more that could have been done to do our best to get the word out. Again, not campaigning, but explaining why the need is there. The need is real, despite the folks that don't necessarily understand that need or believe us. They're about to find out. It's merely a matter of time before things start changing. We don't know exactly how that's going to look yet as far as services go, but it is going to have to. It's, again, unfortunate. I don't see a reason why we would not try again. It may take a little bit of visible impact for some folks to understand that we weren't kidding in the need for that. And so it's, it is going to be a team effort for sure. City staff, city employees, and also the, again, the folks you said that stepped up, and the citizens that understood and put their name behind the effort, very much appreciated. And so, but, you know, we are in a democracy, and a majority of voters have told us what they want, and more importantly, what they don't want. And so it's time to adapt and regroup and see where we go forward. And I know, I'm very confident in this group up here, along with our city manager and staff, they were going to do the best job possible for our folks moving forward. So that being said, I went to Veterans Day Breakfast. It seems kind of light to say that, but at the fire department, they always do a good job there on Olia Road. Also, the veterans parade, got to, I wish we would have been behind these two. They like to play with the siren and the PA and everything else.
Little kids.
So, yeah. Heard them giggling over the siren. Anyway, and also, my arm is still a little sore. I went to the Senior Resource Fair, took advantage of the flu shot and the COVID booster, so that was wonderful. Thank you for that. And like Wade said, you know, what a great time and what a great resource that is. And it just doesn't happen. And so thank you for everything that our senior center did to make that happen. It's a wonderful thing. I'm sure you got very positive feedback from not only the people that attended, but the people who worked it and had their booths up. So, very good, very good. Thank you for that. Attended the ribbon cutting at Raising Canes. I still can't believe there's a line out into the street for chicken fingers, but God bless them. Also to the Sutter County, I have Sutter County Superintendent of Schools, but you had, you had, you had the, you had the real name of it. What was it? What is it?
I've got, uh...
Training Center or something?
Full-on.
Because it was the initial...
Sutter County Career Training and Conference Center.
Okay. Very, very impressive. It sounds like based on the superintendent's presentation and his staff's very thorough presentation that is very much needed. I learned a lot about what they do for children and adults alike, and therefore the community as a whole. And I was very impressed. Maybe want to be a part of it. And I was happy that we all got to be there for that. As Wade said, Gilser was canceled this time. And it was kind of interesting, the timing, I don't think, I don't think they knew about each other, but I was interviewed by NPR stationed up in Chico and also the Sacramento Bee about our Yuba City chickens. It can't be a slow news day, given the election stuff circling around, but they want to know about the chickens. So that was interesting. I'm not sure when, or even if, it's going to air or be printed, but that happened. It was a pleasure to answer some questions about that. And also, I attended a, what they call a artist rendezvous at Yuba City Arts and Culture. They corralled and put out for a bunch of artists who are local or even semi-local, a little further out, to come and kind of gather around and meet each other and see who's who in the art community, and give some, a talk about the organization, a call for membership, to get people to meet each other and kind of synergize energy around being creative, and a lot of opportunities to beautify and enhance our community and our way of life, and get folks' work out there for people to enjoy. So that was nice. It was very well-attended, and happy to be there as well. And so this is my last formal meeting, I think, of eight years. And, yeah, okay. And anyway, it'll be fun. We'll see you on, what, it was December 10th? All right. Thank you all very much. We'll see you soon.
Goffo Wednesday is tomorrow morning.